Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, January 6, 2022. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent.
Here.
Counselor Genetino.
Here.
Counselor Cuddy.
Here.
Counselor LaCastro.
Here.
Here.
And Mayor Quill.
Here. Would you please join us in the pledguree?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
You remain standing from now to sign a prayer or reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, public announcements.
Thanks, Mayor. We have just one announcement this evening. Next week, Monday night, January 10th, at 6:30 PM will be the regularly scheduled meeting of the Civil Service Commission for the City of Auburn.
That's it.
Meeting will be held on the third-floor training room here at City Hall.
Thank you.
That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Presentations and proclamations.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a proclamation this evening from the office of Mayor Michael D. Quill, whereas in 1858, the first patrolman was hired. In the 1890s, the City of Auburn Police Department was able to provide around-the-clock protection to their citizens. The brave men and women of the Auburn Police Department have answered the call to serve and protect our community. Our law enforcement officers embody the courage and honor that represent the best of our city. And whereas in moments of danger and desperation, the first people we turn to are law enforcement officers. These often unsung heroes risk their lives so that we can live in peace and security. And whereas law enforcement officers of every rank and file have chosen a profession that puts their life on the line every day for their communities, they've answered a call to public service that is demanding and often unappreciated. Whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their officers, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the 69 members of the Auburn Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Auburn, these sergeants, lieutenants, captains, and special patrol officers unceasingly provide a vital public service to our community. Now therefore, Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, on behalf of the City Council and citizens of Auburn, do hereby proclaim January 9, 2022, as Law Enforcement Appreciation Day in the City of Auburn.
Counselors with us this evening. We have Chief Slighten.
Mayor, Counselor. On behalf of the men and the women of the Auburn Police Department, I'm proud to accept this proclamation. What the men and women at the department do every day, they go above and beyond. Doesn't matter the calls of service, the weather, whatever they have to do, they're here to protect and serve the citizens of Auburn. I've been proud to do it for 24 years, and I know the men and women are. I'd like to thank Dale, who is a member of the Auburn Police Department in our Crossing Division. Crossing Guard, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We include them also. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Move along to our public to be heard.
At this point in time, we will open the public-to-be-heard portion of the council meeting. Residents are asked to state their name and address for the record. Please keep remarks to three minutes or less, and please observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decorum.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone desiring to be heard? Very well. We'll have another public to be heard near the end of our meeting. Approval of meeting minutes from December 23 of last year. We have a sponsor. Counselor Genetino, seconded by Counselor LaCastro. Discussions, corrections, deletions? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
And Mayor Quill.
Before I vote, should Counselor Kent vote present, since she was not on the council at the time?
So, maybe I can't vote. I was here. I was present.
Okay.
She saw them. We're okay.
Okay. All right. I just... I don't... I just tried to make sure everything was right.
Yeah, yeah.
I vote aye.
Carry.
Mr. Dieter, City Manager, your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of updates, things that are going on in our ongoing quest to clean up neighborhoods, just so the council's aware, in the next week or so, we're going to be focusing some attention on McMaster Place. You may notice as you're on the arterial eastbound coming into the city, right at the downtown line, really. McMaster Place has been a little bit of a challenge for our code enforcement folks for a while, and now that winter has hit and the leaves are off the trees and bushes, it's really not a very attractive gateway to downtown. So, we'll be focusing some attention there in the next week or so. There's three or four properties there that will be followed up on. The police chief and I, amongst some other city staff, met virtually today with... I keep wanting to call him Sheriff Gould, but County Legislature Chairperson Gould and the sheriff and Ray Mizari from Cuba County Mental Health to discuss the mobile crisis intervention team and expanding that service to a 24-hour-a-day service. So, those discussions are ongoing. We... I get the impression from our discussion today that we will be moving that initiative forward relatively quickly, hopefully in the coming weeks, not months. So, it was a good discussion today, and we're hopeful that we can have continued good partnership with the county on that initiative. Lastly, I did want to mention COVID, as much as I'd like to not say that word anymore for at least a couple of days. COVID has certainly had an impact on us over the last... last almost two years now. Recently, especially this week, we saw probably the most marked increase or impact on our city operations than we've seen since the start of it. Our city clerk has put out some messaging along the way, encouraging our residents to do business as much as possible through other means other than face-to-face visits to city buildings and City Hall in particular to protect themselves and protect our workforce. We've been dealing with a large number of individuals in our workforce that have been sick or in isolation, a significant number that are actually sick and unable to work. It has impacted things like our code enforcement division, at least for a handful of days. So, we thank... Our departments have been stepping up and covering for each other. So, for instance, in our code enforcement department, some administrative staff from the assessor's office and from Public Works stepped in to cover the counter for a few days when that was needed. We sent out, again thanks to our city clerk, information to the public that trash and recycling pickup was falling behind, not days behind, literally hours behind. But that service, it's amazing. That service is so reliable that literally if the trucks are minutes late, sometimes 20 minutes late, we start getting phone calls about what's wrong, what happened, did they skip me, whatever. So, we appreciate folks' patience, so we kind of took a double hit on that. We've had a reduced workforce down there due to the impact of COVID, but it's also one of the busiest times of year. So, for instance, just to give you an idea, Mike Talbot, our Director of Public Works, who oversees that operation, shared with me just on one particular day that a typical route on that particular day was about 50 tons of trash, and it was over 60 tons that particular day. And recyclables this week were cardboard, and the particular route typically would be around four and a half tons, and it was seven and a half tons on that particular day. So, you know, it's just kind of a combination of things. And again, departments are stepping up to help each other out. Our codes cleanup crew actually was out today helping with trash collection and recyclable collection. So, it was good to see that happening, and we'll likely have to continue doing that till things pass and we get cleared of all of this stuff. So, I want to make sure to just thank our different departments for working together and making sure the work gets done, and we're gonna keep doing that to the extent that we can, because we have to.
Reports from members of council. Counselors, anyone? We all move along to resolutions. Council Resolution Number One of 2022, authorizing change order number one to construction of landfill number two, stage four. Final closure. We have a sponsor. Counselor Genetino, seconded by Counselor LaCastro.
Council Resolution Number One of 2022, whereas the Auburn City Council authorized bond ordinance number five of 2021 to finance construction costs of the landfill number two, stage four, final closure. And whereas on April 8, 2021, City Council authorized award resolution number 47 in the amount of $5,685,865 to Marcy Excavation Services LLC for the construction of the landfill number two, stage four, final closure. Whereas it is now necessary, the City Council authorized change order number one in the amount of $363,343.44 to Marcy Excavation Services LLC so that the city can pay for the additional work required due to varying field conditions confirmed during construction to close the landfill. And whereas this work includes increasing the pump station structure's height, supplying additional geocomposite clay liner material, supply and install additional intermediate cover soils, relocate grade and compact additional in-place waste, additional barrier soils and topsoil and seedings required to cover additional half acre of the closure. Now therefore be it resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby authorize change order number one in the amount of $363,343.44 to Marcy Excavation Services LLC for the construction of landfill number two, stage four, final closure. And be it further resolved, at the cost of the resolution, in the amount of $363,343.44 is to be charged to landfill closure capital account number AL 8167551KU.
Counselor, do you need anyone from staff, any explanations or any questions? Counselor Cuddy, please.
No, no explanation. I think last week that Mr. Talbot gave a very thorough reasoning for this change order. You know, as difficult as it is price tag, these are needed to be in compliance, and so I just wanted to, you know, reiterate that there was a very thorough presentation last week regarding this change order.
Totally agree. Anyone else? Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question. How much of this work is completed? It's all completed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want me to remark on that?
Sure.
Yeah, this... And as I said two weeks ago, if I would have had to do over, I probably would have communicated a lot better with counsel on this, but it was one of those things where this figure changed by the day almost, especially by the week. So, I didn't want to keep coming back. And I know... I know there's a connotation with change orders that could be an indication that a project has just spiraled out of control, but that's not the case in this. These were... This was actual field measurements when we got out there, as opposed to looking at a plan view and assembling bid documents. So, the landfill is closed. It's capped. You know, what's left to do is to verify seeding and the spring and the grass taking hold and some punch list items.
I think just expand on what Counselor Cuddy said. None of this was optional.
No. And if you look at the... We only, you know, we received three bids. We awarded to the lowest qualified firm. If you add this change order in to their bid, they're right in with the other two. So, it looks like maybe the other two made assumptions that the low didn't make, or we would have been looking at the similar change order for even the higher price if it came in higher. So, you know, it had to be done.
And just for clarification, we are required to take the lowest bid?
Yes, to the lowest qualified bidder. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything further, counsel? Please call the roll.
Resolution One of 2022, Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Thank you. Council Resolution Number Two of 2022, authorizing the city assessor to grant exemptions and a 2022 assessment rule to all property owners who received the... the statement. Put my glasses on. It'll help considerably. Who received that exemption in the 2021 assessment rule. We have a sponsor. Counselor Genetino, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Council Resolution Number Two of 2022, whereas on December 26, 2021, executive order number 11.1 was signed, which temporarily suspended through January 25, 2022, subdivisions seven, seven eight, and eight of section 459(c) of the real property tax law, and subdivisions five, five a, five b, five c, and six of section 467 of the real property tax law, to the extent necessary to permit the governing body of an assessing unit to adopt a resolution directing the assessor to grant exemptions pursuant to such section on the 2022 assessment rule to all property owners who received that exemption on the 2021 assessment rule, thereby dispensing with the need for renewal applications from such persons, and further dispensing with the requirement for assessors to mail renewal applications to such persons. And whereas the City of Auburn assessor requests to grant these exemptions on the 2022 assessment rule to all property owners who received that exemption on the 2021 assessment rule without requiring a renewal application. And whereas the City of Auburn assessor may require a renewal application to be filed when she has reason to believe that an owner who qualified for the exemption on the 2021 assessment rule may have since changed his or her primary residence, added another owner to the deed, transferred the property to a new owner, or died. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council does hereby adopt the resolution, which directs the city assessor to grant exceptions on the 2022 assessment rule for all property owners who received that exemption on the 2021 assessment rule. And the city assessor may require a renewal application if she has reason to believe that an owner who qualified for the exemption in 2021 may have since changed his or her primary residence, added another owner to the deed, transferred the property to a new owner, and/or died. And be it further resolved, the resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you. Discussion, counselors? Very well. Call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Council Resolution Number Three of 2022, adopting the City of Auburn investment policy. We have a sponsor. Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor LaCastro.
Council Resolution Number Three of 2022, whereas New York State General Municipal Law Section 39 entitled Investment Policies for Local Governments states that each local government shall by resolution adopt a comprehensive investment policy which details the local government's operative policy and instructions to officers and staff regarding the investing, monitoring, and reporting of funds of the local government. And whereas the City of Auburn has written a policy in accordance with the New York State requirements for review and adoption by the Auburn City Council, and whereas the city has seen monthly investment income growth since the implementation of this policy in 2014, now therefore be it resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby adopt a policy for the City of Auburn in relation to the investment of public funds in accordance with New York State General Municipal Law Section 39.
Thank you. Counsel with us this evening. We have our comptroller, so if we have any questions or concerns? Anyone? Counselor Genetino.
My question is the same for both this resolution, sorry, and the next one. Are these just carryovers from last year? Or are there changes?
Good evening. Yes, both of these policies are annual policies, and there were no changes to the investment or the procurement policy this year.
Thank you.
Yep.
No further... No further discussion? You'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
And Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Council Resolution Number Four of 2022, authorizing the adoption of the City of Auburn procurement and surplus policy. We have a sponsor. Counselor Genetino, seconded by Counselor LaCastro.
Council Resolution Number Four of 2022, whereas the City of Auburn maintains and annually adopts a procurement and surplus policy which regulates competitive bidding and public service contracts so that taxpayers may receive goods and services at the lowest reasonable prices. And whereas New York State General Municipal Law requires municipalities to annually review their procurement policies in order to update the same with any new legislation, which may change competitive bidding limits. And whereas the city comptroller has reviewed the current City of Auburn procurement and surplus policy and has determined that it is compliant with the provisions of the New York State General Municipal Law, now therefore be it resolved, the City of Auburn procurement and surplus policy is hereby adopted as being compliant with New York State General Municipal Law, and that all of the terms set forth in the policy are continued and authorized in its current form.
Discussion, counselors? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
And Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Council Resolution Number Five of 2022, adopting a budget calendar for the preparation of the fiscal year 2022, 2023 city budget. We have a sponsor. Counselor Genetino, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Council Resolution Number Five of 2022, whereas the city budget is the financial document that funds the many services provided by local city government. And whereas the city's fiscal year begins on July 1 of each year, and the City Council must adopt the final city budget by the end of June each year for the next budget year. And whereas adequate preparation, review, and eventual adoption of the annual city budget is an open process that lasts for several months. And whereas the preparation of the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget, the city manager recommends the following attached budget calendar be adopted. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council sets the attached listed dates as the official budget calendar for the preparation of the City of Auburn fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget, and that all business pertaining to the City Council called for in said calendar will be scheduled as part of the regular City Council meeting agendas in accordance with the council rules and procedure. And be it further resolved, the city clerk is hereby directed to notify the public of the dates as set forth herein, and that throughout the budget preparation process, the city clerk shall immediately make available to the public all budget-related documents as they become available to the City Council.
Thank you. Discussion, counsel? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Financial Resolution Number Six of 2022, adopting the 2022 Cuba County Tax Rate and City of Auburn's share of the Cuba Community College charges. We have a sponsor. Counselor Genetino, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Financial Resolution Number Six of 2022, whereas the City of Auburn has been notified by the Cuba County Legislature that in accordance with Resolution 36621, adopted by the County Legislature on December 14, 2021, the City of Auburn's participation in the 2022 county tax will be in the amount of $8,652,213.44 compared to last year's amount of $8,578,791. An increase of $74,205.53. The full amount to be raised by property taxes in the entire county is $42,314,897. That produces the city's share of the county tax levy is 20.45%. Whereas Cuba County Legislature included within its Resolution Number 36621 of 2021 charges to the city taxpayers for the collection of costs related to the preparation and mailing of county tax bills within the city in the amount of $5,234,000... or in the amount of $5,234.56. And whereas the City of Auburn has been notified by the Cuba County Legislature that in accordance with Resolution 32821 of 2021, that the City of Auburn's proportionate share for the Cuba Community College charges in the amount of $197,973.34 is to be added to the 2022 county tax to be raised from the city. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn that it hereby adopts the 2022 county tax rate in the City of Auburn in the amount of $8.253107 per $1,000 of assessed valuation for the city's share of the county tax, and $0.188727 per $1,000 of assessed valuation for the city's share of the Cuba Community College charges for a total county tax rate of $8.441834 per $1,000, with an increase of $0.069199 per $1,000 over the 2021 tax rate. Be it further resolved, the Auburn City Council hereby adopts the 2022 county tax rate and authorizes the preparation of the necessary tax bills.
Discussion, counsel? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Financial Resolution Number Seven of 2022, establishing the 2022-2023 Seymour Library Tax Levy. We have a sponsor. Counselor Genetino, seconded by Counselor LaCastro.
Financial Resolution Seven of 2022, whereas the Seymour Public Library District comprising the City of Auburn and the Town of Owosco was created by referendum on October 14, 1992, with the subsequent addition of the Auburn School District portion of the Town of Senate in January 1996, and the Town of Fleming in 2011. Whereas the share of the 2022 operating budget to be raised by the City of Auburn from a local assessment against the real property tax within the boundaries of the municipal... of the municipality will be $510,107.23. And whereas the library has requested the City of Auburn advance half of this amount in February of 2022, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Auburn that $510,107.23 is to be levied on the 2022 City of Auburn Property Tax Bills on a separate library tax line, and in advance of the amount of $255,053.62 to be paid in February 2022 to the library, which will reduce the August 2022 payment.
Thank you. Discussion councillors? Please call the roll.
Councillor Kent?
Yes.
Councillor Genatino?
Aye.
Councillor Cuddy?
Yes.
Councillor Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry.
Agreement Resolution Number Eight of 2022, authorizing an agreement with Wegman's Food Market, Inc. for parking. Do we have a sponsor? Councillor Castro, seconded by councillor Genatino.
Agreement Resolution Number Eight of 2022, whereas the City of Auburn has historically leased underutilized parking spaces located on the south side of Genesee Street between Loop Road and South Street to Wegman's Food Markets Incorporated. And whereas the existing lease agreement terminates on January thirty-first, 2022 and the parties would like to enter into a new agreement. And whereas under the proposed agreement, which is attached here too and incorporated herein, Wegman's will pay the city the sum of fifteen hundred dollars for eight designated parking spaces for a six-month term commencing February first, 2022 and ending on July thirty-first, 2022. And whereas Wegman's has already approved the proposed agreement, now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby approve an agreement between the City of Auburn and Wegman's Food Markets, which is attached here too and incorporated herein. Be it further resolved, the mayor is authorized to sign any and all documents in order to finalize the agreement.
Discussion councillors? Please call the roll.
Councillor Kent?
Yes.
Councillor Genatino?
Aye.
Councillor Cuddy?
Yes.
Councillor Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry.
Appointment Resolution Number Nine of 2022, appointing a member to the Board of Directors for the Owasco Lake Watershed Management Council and Watershed Inspection Committee. Do we have a sponsor? Councillor Cuddy?
Yes.
Councillor Castro?
Appointment Resolution Nine of 2022, whereas the agreement that established the Owasco Lake Watershed Management Council between the City of Auburn, the town of Owasco, Keyuga County, and the Owasco Lake Watershed Management Council requires that one director to the Board of Directors of the Watershed Management Council shall be a member of the Auburn City Council and shall also serve as the city's representative to the Owasco Lake Watershed Inspection Committee. And whereas the councillor who was so appointed has retired and it is necessary that the Auburn City Council appoint a new member to the Owasco Lake Watershed Management Council Board of Directors and that member shall also serve as the city's representative to the Watershed Inspection Committee. And whereas the Auburn City Council is desirous of appointing Ginny Kent as a director of the Owasco Lake Watershed Management Council and the city's representative to the Watershed Inspection Committee, now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby appoint City Councilor Ginny Kent to serve as the City Council representative of the Board of Directors of the Owasco Lake Watershed Management Council and the Watershed Inspection Committee and said appointment shall take effect immediately.
Thank you. Any discussion councillors? Please call the roll.
Councillor Kent?
Yes.
Councillor Genatino?
Aye.
Councillor Cuddy?
Yes.
Councillor Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry.
Love it when new council members solo to the aspect, just jump right in. Appointment Resolution Number Ten of 2022, appointing a member to the Auburn Downtown Business Improvement District Board of Directors. Do we have a sponsor? Councillor Cuddy, seconded by councillor Castro.
Appointment Resolution Ten of 2022, whereas the bylaws of the Auburn Downtown Business Improvement District requires that one director shall be appointed to the Bid Board of Directors by the Auburn City Council. And whereas the councillor who was so appointed to the Bid Board of Directors has retired and is necessary that the Auburn City Council make a new appointment to the Bid Board of Directors. Whereas the Auburn City Council is desirous of appointing Jimmy Genatino to serve as the council's appointment to the Bid Board of Directors. Now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby appoint City Councilor Jimmy Genatino to serve as the City Council appointee of the Board of Directors of the Auburn Downtown Business Improvement District and said appointment shall take effect immediately.
Thank you. Discussion councillors? Please call the roll.
Councillor Kent?
Yes.
Councillor Genatino?
Aye.
Councillor Cuddy?
Yes.
Councillor Castro?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry.
Test my analogy, we have no taping items? Staff on their presentations, I don't believe there's any other business from the council, councillors? Anything? Councillor Cuddy, please.
Yes, um, Mayor, I received a communication through, uh, the QW County Health Environmental Department, Michelle Wonderlich and Anna Effler, Dr. Effler, that, uh, the, the state's DEC's three oh three D list, which is, um, a list of impaired water bodies in New York State. There is a comment period in which the water bodies that are listed on there, uh, the public is invited to, um, to give their input and insight on the water bodies. And, um, Owasco Lake continues to be on that list, um, at least in part. As you may remember, shortly after the first harmful algal bloom threat to our drinking water, uh, we had already been on the list, um, since nineteen ninety-eight. And, um, shortly after that, the, 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 the lake was, um, put in a, uh, I guess limbo in what was known as requiring verification of an impairment. So, um, seeing as that communication has come forth, I would like to respond personally myself, but also if I may draft a letter and if it is, uh, amenable to my colleagues on council to sign on, I would like to get some support to, to advocate for a TMDL for the all of Owasco Lake and put it on the priority list rather than be in this, um, I guess vague area in the three oh three D list. So, um, I will be coming back next week with a draft letter and, um, hopefully I can get some support from my colleagues and submit that in the comment, for the comment period. The comment period ends January twenty-ninth and, um, which gives us enough time to, to review the letter. And if there is, uh, the appetite for the council to sign on, I, I would like to, uh, submit that before the twenty-ninth.
With council's permission, uh, I would request that, if approved, that you work with Corporation Council to make sure that we're on firm grounds and also if you get a copy to, of, of your response to council.
Next week?
So we can, we can review it.
Absolutely, I, I will definitely do that, Mayor, thank you.
What, councillor, you go with that?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillors, anything else? Sounds great, councillor, thank you. Anything else from council? Very well. Move along to our second public to be heard. Is there anyone desiring to be heard? Very well. Uh, Mr. Zager, do you have a request for executive session?
Yes, Mayor, we have, uh, two items made confidential under attorney-client privilege.
Good. entertain a motion for executive session? Councillor Genatino, seconded by councillor Castro.
Executive session, five forty-one PM. Councillor Kent?
Yes.
Councillor Genatino?
Aye.
Councillor Cuddy?
Yes.
Councillor Castro?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill?
Aye, recess or executive session?
Thank you, I appreciate, I gave you all that.